Good morning, everyone. Let me call to order the Mayor Commission Work Session. Today is August 2nd, 2021. Time is 10:01. We have one item on the agenda, Artificial Turf Discussion. Commissioner Lambert, I know that you have been wanting to schedule this for some time, so if you want to tee it up, please do.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. I think we're all aware that this has been a hot topic at our Commission meetings lately. I know some of our residents who've had some concerns with this are here with us in the audience and are watching online today. As I reviewed all of the notes from meetings I've had with staff, with administration, as well as emails and conversations with residents, as well as experts in the field, I've put together a few thoughts and believe that we have some competing priorities here that we need to balance today. And the first is related to code enforcement. And, you know, my understanding, what I think we all can agree upon, that code enforcement are laws that help us to be a good neighbor to one another, that they provide sensible and assertive approaches to bringing property owners into compliance with the law as an important part of maintaining the appearance, functioning, and property values of a neighborhood. And many neighborhoods have used code enforcement to help bring up properties to a minimum community standard, and I hear good things when code enforcement is applied well. The second competing priority that I know is of importance to many of us and to me is providing leadership as it relates to climate concerns and sustainability, so much so that this is the second pillar within our strategic plan within the city to reduce climate impacts through adaptive and mitigation efforts and to increase resource efficiency as we strive to maintain our star community standard. The third issue that I hope we address today is the manner in which we communicate about this issue and other issues with our residents. And I'm hopeful that we always keep in mind that we're providing a transparent and regular communication, as I believe that should be another one of the pillars in our work in the city. So as I turn it back over to you, Mayor, and to the staff, I would say three concerns that I have are related to our current ordinance is can exceptions be made for areas in which hardscaping is allowed? If certain amounts of artificial turf is allowed in the backyard, then why is it prohibited in the front yard? And my third question is how does the environmental hazards of runoff, pesticides, lawn mower gas, water waste, et cetera, compare to the concerns of the toxic chemicals that have been reported to be found in synthetic turf? I'm sure other questions and issues will come up today, but I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this on the dais today. Thank you.
All right. Very good. We do have a staff presentation. I think, Mr. Green, you're taking the lead on that.
Yes, Mayor.
So let's go ahead and proceed with the staff presentation. We'll hear any other questions that may come up.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Rick Green, Development Services Director. And what I'd like to do is talk very quickly about the history of our landscape ordinance amendments, particularly as it relates to artificial turf. I'll specifically discuss the city regulations regarding artificial turf. I'll provide an update of where we are with code violations on this topic, and then I'll turn it over to Penny Redford, who will discuss the sustainability aspects of artificial turf, and then certainly open it up to any questions. So just kind of an overview, the first inkling, if you will, that we started discussing artificial turf took place with the adoption of Ordinance 4420-12. It was adopted by the City Commission on June 11th of 2012. We had discussions with the City Commission, and the Commission at that time decided that they would allow it in selected areas, but that it would be prohibited in all residential districts, single and multifamily. Four years later, we came back with Ordinance 4689-16, and that was an ordinance that addressed multiple changes to our landscape code. And as part of that ordinance, we specifically addressed landscape code and artificial turf. And the Commission at that time again decided to uphold the decision to prohibit that in all residential districts. And again, that was adopted on April 11th, 2017. A year later, we came back with Ordinance 4756-17, which was adopted on February 12th, 2018. And there, we made some exceptions to artificial turf, and that's where we allowed it in the side and rear setbacks. And I'll go through each one of these three very quickly. So beginning with the 2012 ordinance, these were actual slides that were presented. They were not altered, but these were slides that, again, were presented to the City Commission at that time. So again, there was a growing interest in artificial turf. We talked about how the process was made with synthetic fibers, and then the agreement was reached to allow those in indoor sports arenas and then other locations. We had contacted several cities and areas throughout the country that were starting to address the artificial turf regulations and talked about how they were treated in other jurisdictions. We talked about the benefits and the concerns. Certainly, there's a water conservation aspect that is positive, but again, artificial turf does still require some portion of water to clean. And then the concerns that the staff raised were those of aesthetics of the artificial turf, the heat that's emanated from the artificial turf, the rubber infill material that is used as the base, the lifespan and disposal, bacteria can be created on artificial turf, and then the lead content that was also addressed by the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission, as well as drainage of water through the artificial turf. And we also noted that, again, the surface temperature of artificial turf, looking at the three studies that were referenced here that we showed back in 2012, again, can get upwards of 178 degrees, as noted in the University of Missouri study. So the decision was made to require that all open space be covered with grass and that plastic or other non-organic plant materials would be prohibited. So that's what was decided by the Commission in 2012. So it was limited to certain areas, the construction of non-city-owned athletic fields as part of the construction of any non-residential development, and then on rooftop terraces. And then in every case, there was a requirement, if you were to use artificial turf, that a Class A special use permit would be required. A Class A special use permit requires the approval of the City Commission. And then two notable exceptions, that again, the artificial turf could not be visible from the public thoroughfare, and as we said at the outset, it should not or would not be permitted in any residential district. So that's what came out of Ordinance 4420-12. What's also of note is that there is a requirement in that ordinance that said that any owner or applicant must obtain a building permit prior to installation of artificial turf. And you will see this language carried out in all three ordinances that I referenced. So again, we came back four years later. Again, my staff met with several firms on May 5th of 2016 and June 28th, 2016, to see how these firms were addressing artificial turf in the jurisdictions in which they were working. We made a variety of changes to the landscape code, and then we included, again, a discussion of artificial turf when we brought this ordinance to the City Commission. And again, no substantial changes were made to the artificial turf regulation. The areas where it was permitted continued to remain in that ordinance. And again, there was the same provision that a building permit would be required if anybody were to be utilizing artificial turf. So a year later, with the increased pressure to do something with artificial turf, we brought it back at the Commission's request under 4756-17, which was adopted by the Commission in February of 2018. Like we did previously, we met with more firms, more cities, the county, to see how they were addressing it. We had a series of workshops. Ray Carrance here, Senior Landscape Planner. So we had at least three separate workshops with these folks to talk about how artificial turf was being handled. We also, at this point, had created a Sustainability Action Committee, and we brought this idea, this concept, to the Sustainable Action Committee under Penny Redford and had that committee weigh in on artificial turf. So what was decided at that meeting, particularly with recommendation from the Sustainable Advisory Committee, that a concession, artificial turf would be permitted in the rear setback and side setback, so it was no longer totally prohibited in residential zoning districts. We had requirements of how the material had to be utilized, and again, we added a definition for public thoroughfare, again implying that the artificial turf could not be seen from the street. So with these revisions, again, it was permitted in the side and rear setback. Again, it could not be visible from a road or street. And again, that same provision on the bottom right corner that required that a building permit must be secured before any artificial turf is installed, including the side and rear setback. So this is kind of a graphic of a typical 60-by-100-foot residential lot. You see the home with the side setbacks, 25-foot front setback. So what this ordinance then did was allow the artificial turf to be assigned or placed in the side or rear. And the reason that it was allowed to go in the side and rear was because in this location highlighted in the dark green, again, you can put concrete, you can put patio stones, you could put a swimming pool, it does not have to be grass. So the thought was that if you're going to cover it, let's say, with pebbles or rocks, what would be the harm in doing artificial turf? Because again, it was a non-living material. Again, a fence or some obstruction had to be provided so it wouldn't be visible from the street or thoroughfare. And again, the code required then, as it does now, that 75% of the front yard or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less, must be met to meet the zoning code. So we looked at other cities to see how they were handling artificial turf. So this is fairly recently. We had 20 cities that either permitted or did not regulate artificial turf. And again, it may have been that it just was not addressed in their code. You'll see a couple asterisks, Boynton Beach and Palm Beach, because they are looking at it now. Again, I placed West Palm Beach under the subject to conditions because we do allow it with conditions. So there's 20 cities that either don't address it or permit it, 13 with some caveats, and then five that are strictly prohibited. I will mention that the town of Palm Beach is looking at this in earnest recently, on May 28th. This was an article that came out in the Palm Beach Daily News, that they are looking at artificial turf and considering requirements that maybe prohibit that as well. So that's something that they are looking at as we speak. With regard to the code violations, since September 22nd of 2020, code enforcement, and code is represented by Mitch Posner here this morning, there are 46 total turf violations issued by code enforcement. So the ones in green, highlighted in green, have been resolved. The ones in yellow are pending, and the ones in red have been deemed to be in violation. So where we are today, 24 are now in compliance. Since I did this slide, I understand that three more have come into compliance, so that number should be 27 as of this morning. 10 properties are still in violation, and 12 properties are still being adjudicated or going through the process, or they failed inspection. And this is kind of a summary of where we are. So one violation included having artificial turf in the side setback with no permits and visible from the street. One received a violation for having artificial turf in both the front and side setbacks. Three had artificial turf just in the driveway. The majority of the violations were having artificial turf in the front setback, in the front yard. You had three that had it in the front and driveway, and then six in the front and in the swale area. So all over, but primarily having artificial turf in the front was the main violation. So the way the process works is that when a code officer sees a violation, the property owner is given a violation notice. The notice gives the applicant or the owner time to comply with the violation and bring the violation into compliance. Excuse me. Failure to comply over a period of time requires that the homeowner appear before a special magistrate hearing in these chambers. If the special magistrate finds the property in violation, they typically grant additional time for the property owner to come into compliance, and then they specify that a daily fine will begin to accrue at the end of that time period if they don't come into compliance. If nothing happens, then liens could be placed on the property accruing fines. The property owner may eventually apply for lien reduction once the case is complied. Again, sometimes that happens after the deadline imposed by the magistrate. And then the request is heard by the special magistrate, who can also hear the facts and hear the testimony and make a decision on the reduction of the lien. So this is the process that we follow for not only artificial turf code violations, but other code violations as well. So at this point, let me turn it over to Penny Redford, who will discuss the sustainability issues.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Well, I am certainly here to talk about the sustainability side of our environment and artificial turf. Before we really delve into the artificial turf part, I want to just say, what are we talking about replacing in the first place? So lawns seem to be getting a bad rap right now, yet they provide many, many benefits. And when I talk about lawns, I mean, I am talking about turf grass, but it can be made up of many things, not just turf grass. And lawns are not monocultures. They typically have a multitude of different types of plants inside them, and they provide cooling, they have flood control, they, you know, certainly are habitat for a multitude of species. And so there is a lot of positive impacts with lawns, including carbon sequestration. So there are over 50 million acres of lawns estimated in the U.S. Now, it does depend on how you take care of your lawn. You know, are you over fertilizing? Are you putting too many chemicals in it? There are natural ways to take care of lawns as well as the higher maintenance ways. So let's talk about artificial turf and the impacts that we see in the environment. I just want to be really, really clear that artificial turf does not support life. It is, it's like a desert that has nothing living and growing and supporting of it on top of the ground as well as underneath the ground. So that means there's, there are no worms, there are no bugs, there are no things that help break down and create a living soil. Artificial turf does increase runoff. There's one and a half times more runoff than grass. Grass, obviously, the rain or the water trickles down and gets into the aquifer and more purified when it goes through a living and growing plant. There are no positive ecosystem services to artificial turf, and that stands really totally opposite of what I see as a resilient and forward-thinking city with climate change in mind. A very, very big issue is heat. So we have, and obviously, we know, in South Florida and along the rest of the country and the world, heat is becoming more and more important and a factor in how we do our daily lives, whether it's work or play or even just commuting. Artificial turf is a heat sink. It can be up to 60 or 70 degrees higher in temperature than a natural grass. So that means it could get up to 150, 160, 170 and higher degrees at that level there where the turf is. And, I mean, it can get hot to the touch. The other issue that is very important is plastic in the environment. So microplastic, when you're walking on artificial turf, it has a breakdown, just like everything else. And I'm sure that you have heard, and because it's all over the place, the plastic that is in the environment, that's in the oceans, that's in us. So microplastic waste is very important to consider. The other issue with artificial turf, when it has been down for a while, is it's very difficult to sort of rehab that ground and make it a livable, you know, area again. Artificial turf, we don't know really how long a turf grass, artificial turf grass will last. You know, what is the maintenance? What is the, what happens to it after it's not good anymore and you have to replace it? I also want to note that the University of Florida, in their Florida-friendly landscaping, does not consider artificial turf to be a Florida-friendly product. So it has, because of the temperature, because of the negative impacts on beneficial microbes, and just what you have to do after it is no longer a good product to use when it has to be replaced. So they do not require, I mean, they do not support artificial turf. So let's talk about the artificial turf components. So artificial turf, make no doubt, is made out of petroleum and plastic. Petroleum in itself has a huge carbon footprint, and we are working around the world now to limit fossil fuels because they are the leading cause of climate change. I already spoke about plastic in the environment, but I just want to reinforce that we have a petroleum-based product that is getting into the environment. And in 2019, the EPA did a study and found that, yes, artificial turf does contain toxins, chemicals that are, can leach into the environment, and one of the toxins are phthalates. So phthalates are that chemical that are called forever chemicals. They don't degrade. Phthalates are cancer-causing, and they're everywhere. They're already everywhere. So the last thing that we want to do is add more phthalates and other toxins into the environment. Also, some of the artificial turf companies will say that the artificial turf is made out of recycled product, or it can be recycled. Well, our Solid Waste Authority does not recycle artificial turf. It takes a special processing that we do not have. When you install artificial turf, the first thing that you do is you pull up all of the good soil. When you do that, that releases carbon dioxide into the environment. Then you have to layer different types of sand and depending upon the way the particular artificial turf is installed, but it's layers of different types of sand and it's compressed. So again, you're not going to have that, that runoff is going to be increased, you're not going to have that percolation that's going to be typical. And I know that there is a lot of discussion out there about artificial turf, that it doesn't have maintenance and that you're reducing, you know, you're not using lawn mowers. Well, you're not. However, there's nothing to clean artificial turf except for rain and water. So if it's hot, the only way you can cool it down is to sprinkle it with water. If there are animals, pets, other animals that use the bathroom on the artificial turf, the only way that you can get rid of it is to squirt it off with water or apply some kind of cleaning. Some artificial turf even requires that you vacuum it and to fluff it up periodically. And then there's also the concern of odor, or again, you're using water, which is one of the main things that people say is water-saving. The other thing that you, that can happen, especially in our area, is weed seeds will, or any kind of seeds, will sprout within the artificial turf or around the edges of artificial turf, and you have to use an herbicide to get those out. So it is not totally chemical-free. So instead of artificial turf, and in looking at our landscape code, why don't we just use other plants? If you don't want to have a high-maintenance lawn, which you don't have to have a high-maintenance lawn, but if you feel that if you've got a lawn, it's got to be like totally perfect, then minimize your lawn. Include larger landscape beds in your landscape. Use native plants. Native plants do not require the pesticides or the fertilizers once established that some other plants do, and they are a habitat provider. We have lost over 40% of our insects in the last decade. So you might think, well, insects, who cares about them? But pollinators, that's how we have our food, that's how animals have their food, many animals, birds and other animals depend on those insects, and without them, they do not have a food supply either. So you can, if you minimize then your amount of landscape, excuse me, turf grass in the landscape, then you also don't have to use turf grass. There are plenty of other plants that are ground covers, like sunshine mimosa, perennial peanut, jasmines, many other types. And you can use native and drought-resistant plants that can cut back on the amount of water that is needed for your overall landscape. You know, specific to why would we allow artificial turf on the side in the backyards and not in the front yard? Well, I will say, I'm not supportive of artificial turf anywhere, which is probably no surprise to you all. But the reason that the Sustainability Advisory Committee, back when we looked at this again, had gone ahead and agreed with the side in the backyard was because you could already basically pave over that area. They were not comfortable with the toxins that could be released with the artificial turf, but they thought that it was a compromise. As far as the front yard, think about this slippery slope that we could be on if we allowed artificial turf in the front yard. That would basically mean you could pave over your front yard. I mean, how can you justify, if you allow artificial turf, a non-organic, non-living cover in the front yard, why, how could you, if you allowed that, not allow pavers or gravel or other things? So I really want to just plead with you to think about the environmental benefits of having real turf and the negative impacts of having artificial turf, especially in the front yard, but across all areas, actually. And one last thought is going back to that heat. Our city is, you know, we are trying to address heat. We've got tree giveaways, we've got large tree plantings. We're trying to get people out, walking, biking, and having artificial turf that is that huge heat sink is just so opposite from that. So please consider the environmental ramifications and hopefully climate change, and I would urge you to not allow artificial turf in the front yards.
Thank you. Mr. Green, did you have any more as part of your presentation?
No, Mr. Mayor. This was, I was going to go right into questions at that point.
Okay. Commissioners, it's now time for any questions you may have. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much for the presentation and the research that has gone into this. I appreciate it. I have many questions, but the first one will be about the, I appreciate understanding with that graphic about why artificial turf was allowed in the backyard, because it's hardscape that would be allowed in the backyard. Was there discussion at the time of this ordinance and the change that was made in in 2018 where driveways that are already hardscaped would be allowed to have decorative pieces of artificial turf used there?
Commissioner, I don't think that was specifically addressed as part of that discussion. Um, I, I know pursuant to the slide I show earlier, that in some cases, you see that in the driveway where the artificial turf is there, but that wasn't specifically addressed in either of the three ordinances that we addressed.
Okay, well, given that and get, you know, having a starting point of this conversation and, and possible suggested changes, that would be one suggested change that I would like to see, or at least to have further discussion on, um, the possibility of, of allowing that exception.
But to, to address that, we, we made it very clear, we did not want artificial turf where it could be seen.
Correct.
So, so to the extent that we didn't address driveways in particular, uh, the underlying theory and concept was that we didn't want artificial turf where it could be seen. If it could be seen on a driveway, then it's not something we were in favor of.
In, in addition to the front yard as well, technically the driveway's in the front yard, so in that respect, we didn't want it. You're right, Mayor.
Okay. You have other questions?
I mean, I would, I wholeheartedly support our city's sustainability efforts. I am one of the first ones who's always saying, stop using plastic water bottles. This is my last one I use every day. Um, you know, I was a champion for banning, um, plastic straws. I would love to see the city ban use of plastic, single-use water bottles as well, as, as well as many other things. I think that, um, the arguments that you have made based on, on research about the heating of our community, um, you know, I, I take that very seriously and, you know, at least this first exception that I, I would like us to consider is not about ripping up opportunities for growth and life and, and putting artificial turf. I'm just talking about places where we already do not allow, or that we, I'm sorry, that we allow impervious materials that we could make an exception there. It sounds like not having it in the front yard is an aesthetic issue and not an environmental issue.
Well, all of the things that I just spoke about with the environmental impacts, with the heat, with the runoff, with the chemicals, with the plastic, I mean, by supporting artificial turf, we are again supporting the use of fossil fuels, which is the main contributor to climate change throughout the world. So, you know, the chemicals, the, um, it, it is much, much more than aesthetics. Now, again, I'm not for artificial turf anywhere because the things that I'm talking about, you're still going to get the chemical leaching. So whether it's in the front yard or on the, on a driveway, it's still going to happen.
Right, it looked like in that one photo, the drive, the backyard was almost seventy-five percent of the total yard, front and back, so in that case, we're allowing it in seventy-five percent.
I have this vision of neighborhood after neighborhood, yard after yard, filled with plastic. I ca, I just cannot see that as a city of West Palm Beach.
So my head-
And, and I would say, why don't we take this opportunity to reverse what we have said in allowing it on the side yard and the backyard because of the chemical, because of the heat? So-
And I, I have that same question, Penny, as well. You know, six months ago, when I brought this topic up, I had an email from you that stated some of these same reasons, not to this much detail, clearly. Um, and I think at that time, it would have been nice to have some information out about these other alternatives and making these suggestions, but for six months, it was silence about what were some alternatives? Uh, you know, it's, it's interesting that you talk about the perennial peanuts and the jasmine ground cover. That's what we have in our backyard. Um, you know, we have some areas where there's some palm trees and it's like sand. Nothing will really grow, no grass will grow back there. We didn't want to have to have the cost of, of watering the grass, and so we have this ground cover that is very easy to maintain, but, you know, that was my third question in my opening was about communication and about, you know, giving options to our residents.
Yeah. Commissioner, I will say that we did discuss that when, when we brought the, the most recent ordinance forward, and I think part of the staff frustration is, and I continued to reiterate throughout my presentation, that a building permit is required. And again, the forty-six violations that were issued, they were not issued because people were told that it was illegal and they decided to do it anyway. If, if any of those folks had called our office and spoken to, you know, Ray Curancy, our senior landscape, we would have told them that artificial turf is not permitted. Here are other options that you can pursue. It doesn't have to be grass, it could be something else. But at a minimum, you know, it is illegal, it's something you can't do, and they were done continuously, and I, and I hate to say it, but I think it's probably some of the same contractors that did the work, the homeowner got cited, they went to another home, did the same thing, and that process repeated thems, itself. Um, again, a simple phone call to us, we would have said, or order, order building, when they came in to get a permit, we would have said, this is not permitted. It wouldn't have been approved, it would have gone through a zoning review, and they would have been told and notified that you can't do this. But here are alternatives that could be provided instead.
And I can appreciate that, to you, it's a simple phone call, but to the many residents that I've heard them say, it was as simple as them looking at their neighbor's house that had, in one instance, she's had it for fifteen-plus years in her front yard and the swale area. Um, so maybe you could talk a little bit about the code enforcement process of this and, and how it was allowed to go on for so many years without any citations? Because I, I don't have it in front of me, but I did have a report that, you know, there were very few citations up until, I think, 2018. So it-
Well, I, I think, and Mitch is here, and I don't want to put Mitch on the spot, but if he wants to address it, but I, what I will say is that, um, again, the technology was such that this is somewhat of a recent phenomenon. This, this artificial turf wasn't around, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, so we just started to see an increase in a desire to use artificial turf very recently. I will say that a homeowner was cited, and in, in many cases, it's difficult for a code officer who's driving in a car to drive down the street and notice artificial turf being in someone's yard because it's difficult to determine is that artificial turf or is a grass without getting out, touching it and feeling it. Um, we did have a property owner did complain. We did have a property owner did complain when they got cited, and they provided code enforcement with a list of properties that had violations. So it's incumbent upon the code officer, the code enforcement division, to investigate those, and that's why you see a preponderance of code, um, enforcement violations subsequent to September of last year.
And by the way, simply because you can't tell whether it's real grass or fake grass does not undermine the rationale for, uh, preventing artificial turf under the ordinance. Uh, there are reasons other than, well, if it looks like real grass, we could get away with it. That, that's not why we have the ordinance, and I think we've had a very complete, uh, comprehensive presentation on the rationale, uh, behind the ordinance. I also want to speak to the whole backyard situation. I think you alluded to it, Rick, when you said that since in the backyard, you're allowed to have, uh, uh, stones and pebbles and other stuff like that, so to distinguish between those non-natural, uh, products in your backyard and artificial turf was kind of nonsensical. Uh, because you, you're allowed to have these other things in your backyard, so to, to allow you to have artificial turf back there was not so inconsistent with, with what is going on.
That's correct, Mayor. Again, it could be hardscaped, so all the grass could be removed anyway, so in that case, we thought, the Sustainability Action Committee thought, well, that could be a compromise, that we'd allow it only in the back, because again, it could be hardscaped.
And again, it does not take away from the real rationale in theory and objections to artificial turf. Simply because we allowed it in the backyard doesn't mean that we ignore the detriment of, of artificial turf in the backyard. It's simply that we're allowing other things in the backyard as well.
Correct.
Mitch, did you want to have some, you had something to say?
Morning, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, just regarding the surplus of cases, as Rich, Rick already touched on, um, bottom line is, is we have cases for two reasons. Uh, the officer initiates it because he notices the violation, or a complaint is received and we have to investigate the violation. Uh, of course, if we investigate and find a violation, we will have to therefore cite it. In, in this particular case, uh, there's a surplus of sudden artificial turf cases because an officer noticed a change in someone's landscape that caught his attention, as opposed to he drove by and the grass was short, so it just looked like grass. Uh, that change was artificial turf on the front lawn, and even more obvious was those, the, the parkways for those two houses had installed rocks. After citing those two and bringing those two cases to hearing, those two owners provided us a list of forty-five properties with artificial turf to investigate. And the bulk of those were, were correct and something we could verify and we had to cite. That included the one that was mentioned where it had been there for a number of years. Uh, in that particular case, I've actually been to that property myself, and if you're driving by, it just looks like green grass. Uh, but at this point, with the complaint received, we got out of the car, we stood in the, the right-of-way, touched the grass, and it was clearly artificial, so we were duty-bound to cite it. Uh, on our end, it's, it's not any kind of an opinion. Uh, I'm not here to offer an opinion as to what you decide to do moving forward, uh, just as far as code procedures go, that's why we had such a surplus.
Other question, I want to allow the Commissioners to speak, and we'll certainly get back to you, Commissioner Lambert, uh, Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Commissioner Lambert, for being a champion of this issue and hearing, uh, the residents of, as they've, uh, continued to talk about this, and I know that it's very important to them, so thank you for listening and then taking the action, uh, to bring this forward. I've heard very compelling information that would lead me to, to believe that we would not be in support, or that I would not be in support of artificial turf, but I don't know that I've received comprehensive feedback on what the pros may be or what people may say are the reasons that they may be using artificial turf. I know that everything that I've heard today has been about sustainability, which is why I would lean, um, towards, uh, uh, using natural, uh, grass, but there are reasons that people have used artificial turf, and I don't know that that information has been shared with us sufficiently enough for us to make the, um, well-informed, uh, decision.
Yes, Commissioner, I'll, I put the slide up, this is again what was discussed when we first brought this issue forward. Um, so certainly water conservation is an issue while you're not devoid totally of using water with artificial turf. Um, there is some savings, um, noise reduction improvements, the air quality, reduction in chemical applications. Um, but again, my, and my, my large staff does feel that the, um, concerns, the negative impacts greatly outweigh the benefits.
Good. Uh, Commissioner Shof? Oh, did you want to add something?
Could I add something?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Um, if I, if I could, I would say the reduction in chemical applications, if you are using native plants and looking at other ground covers and a more natural approach to lawn care, then you won't have those chemical applications. The artificial turf is leaching heavy metals and phthalates, so that is certainly a balance, uh, I mean, that you have to take a look at. I don't consider chemical reduction that true in this case. Uh, it's just a change in the chemicals, perhaps. Um, improvement to air quality, grass can provide oxygen. We don't get any of that. If anything, we get off-gassing from artificial turf because of the heat, so it is not an improvement in air quality. Now, I'm sure that came from not using lawn, uh, mowers and blowers and things like that. So again, there are alternatives to minimize that use. Noise reduction, actually, grass has a better absorption, is my understanding, than the artificial turf, because that is a, you know, on that compacted, uh, land. And then water conservation, again, it really depends on how you're maintaining your landscape, and artificial turf does require water to cool it down, to dust it off, and to take care of any, um, animal waste. So I don't see quite the benefits, um, that are listed there.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Shof?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you very much for the presentation and to the, the many emails from residents I've received on this topic. I think as I'm listening today, there are two things that it narrows down to, and there's an environmental aspect and an aesthetic aspect, and sitting up here and looking at the aesthetics, to me, that's very subjective. I might think my natural lawn looks fantastic, you might think your turf lawn looks fantastic. So as I look at this from a city policy, for me, it comes down to environmental and environmental and sustainability. Um, and while I'm very supportive of environmental and sustainability, I also respect our residents' personal property rights. And so I guess my question is on some of the exceptions. So we've talked about how the compromise was reached in 2018 for the, the side and rear yards, understanding sustainability is not in support of that. We are looking at certain violations that were issued based upon, um, driveways, which are hardscapes as well. So I guess curious, understanding the, the rationale, if you can install pavers, then, you know, we allowed installation of, of artificial turf, wondering if the same application could be made there. And my second question is, um, you know, a lot of time has passed over turf, uh, evolution, right? You know, we've had fifteen years versus today. There was a picture that you had presented with a lot of different pieces of, of artificial turf. So it doesn't sound to me like all turf is created equal. Um, there are other areas that allow this. Are there, uh, you know, I understand there'll be some turf that, that has all of these really terrible impacts, but is there another higher quality of turf? Um, and, and I think to Commissioner Warren's point, you know, uh, just trying to understand both sides of the situation, if there's something that provides, um, less off-gassing, maybe fewer plastic particles, just understanding what the options are for our residents.
I will readily admit that I am not an artificial turf expert to that level, but all of the artificial turf is made from petroleum products. The, it is plastic, it leaches chemicals, it provides no habitat for life above or below ground. So even if you have a higher quality type of artificial turf, the big impacts for me are those, and that also you have the heat impacts as well. Plus, you're supporting a fossil fuel process that has a lot of carbon emissions even before it gets to the, to the installation.
Sure, and, and certainly I understand from a sustainability perspective of why your argument is in favor, um, or against perhaps, um, of artificial turf. Um, you know, I, I don't think that probably that opinion would, would represent what the artificial turf side of the world would think, and, uh, understanding where you're coming from there. I guess my question in all of this too, kind of goes to some of what Commissioner Lambert, um, has said in this, in this, um, presentation as well. You know, I'm certainly supportive of sustainability going forward and trying to make sure that we're, you know, taking all those steps to reduce our carbon footprint, et cetera, but we've, we've got a lot of residents here that were, um, i- in violation of code unknowingly, which we have a lot of residents that violate various codes unknowingly. Um, and so I don't know that some of the residents here today would have said, thank you very much, lawn company, please come and install something that's going to be against code. So there, there's somewhat of a communication issue there, and I wondered, you know, if we can find some course forward to remedy what we have, um, because I always do too look into the future to say, what if everyone took advantage of whatever policy we're setting here today? What would that situation look like? And, you know, I think that would be a concerning situation i- if we were to move forward, um, allowing turf in the front yard for everybody. Um, but that being said, I think there's, there's a titration point perhaps, and maybe a way to draw a line and, and move forward. So I guess that's kind of the question that I have. I- is there enforcement, uh, understanding what code enforcement would be for our residents moving forward, but more so from an artificial turf company point of view? You know, do we have an enforcement mechanism that we could reach out, have that communication with companies, and have some sort of violation if you put your product in a place where you weren't permitted to do so?
Certainly, Commissioner, we can discuss that. Um, I know recently I've had discussions with Ray Curancy, our senior landscape planner, about sending out a notice to the companies that actually have been doing the installation of artificial turf, whether in our city or other cities, just advising them of the rules and regulations for the city. Um, we certainly can get with council and see if we can come up with, um, some type of language or deterrent to those companies and, and see what we can come up with.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that. I mean, I, I find myself in a, in a- I mean, I find myself in a very tough position, because again, I want to be respectful of residents trying to improve their property and trying to make their property values go up and, you know, our city better for it, but also making sure that we're not creating, you know, undue sustainable policies going forward. Again, looking at that place in the future where if everyone on your block, or if everyone on your street, or everyone in the city started to, you know, follow our code, and that's why we make those codes, but also understanding there are times like this where we can take a look at it and say, "What does life look like at this point in time, and how should we move forward?" So certainly appreciate the information and maybe looking into what would happen from here.
Well, the thing that I struggle with is these laws are not new. They've gone back to 2012. It's not like we just adopted these, you know, a couple of months ago when people weren't aware that they were under books. And I would venture to say that the companies that install this artificial turf are well aware of the requirement to get special permits and do everything else, just as any other contractor does work on someone's home. They know what the requirements are, whether they tell the property owner or not, I don't know. But, you know, we have to have a certain respect and honor for the laws that are on the books, our ordinances. And, you know, there's an old saw that ignorance of the law is no excuse. And so to suggest that we, as the city, have not done our part because we haven't told people about these ordinances and the requirements to get special permits, I don't buy that. These are ordinances that have been in place since 2012, and as to the rights of property owners to take action on behalf of their property, we have a number of ordinances that restrict property rights for the greater good of our city. And we, as policymakers, need to make decisions, we're charged with making decisions from what we think is the better good. And at some point, 2012 and subsequent court amendments, the decision was made by folks who preceded you on the dais, that artificial turf in the front yards being visible was not something that was for the greater good of our particular city. Doesn't mean we can't change it, but at least that is what is on the books now. And the presumption should be enforcing the laws that are on the books, and if we want to change those, then let's have that discussion. But these are laws that have been in place since 2012. And so the burden of knowledge of that should be on the property owners and their contractors, and it shouldn't be up to us as the city to remind people of laws that have been around for almost a decade. Mr. Fauna.
Thank you, Mayor, City Administrator, City Commissioner Armando Fauna, Assistant City Administrator. And to that point, I think it was important that we kind of recognize if you remove a tree from a front yard, you've got to get a permit. So if you were taking an entire lawn and putting in artificial turf, I think most residents understand that that requires at least an inquiry to the city to see if that's allowed. And the other point, I've heard a couple of mentions about the driveways. Well, I think Mr. Green put up a slide showing of the current violations, existing violations, I believe only three, maybe, three or four, related to driveway. So in terms of a policy perspective, this has been revised now, what, three times in the last 10 years? I don't know that it makes a whole lot of sense to look at a policy change for something that's impacting such a small number of residents, and that's easily correctable. So that's, you know, that's a lot of work involved in doing policy changes for something like that.
Commissioner Fox, I think you had your hand up.
Thank you, and I want to thank everyone who's here today and those who have sent us emails and calls and been continuing to come to our city commission meetings. I appreciate hearing from all of you. I think one of the, in trying to research this a little bit, you know, what I have read so much about is that the biggest draw on our freshwater is watering lawns. And so I'm interested in hearing a little bit more about the impacts. I know Penny is not supporting any changes here, but I, you know, I think to me, we do, that is an important issue, and the contamination as well from the pesticides and the other chemicals. I've heard from many people who have artificial turf because their kids or their pets have allergies, and I've also heard from many people who, you know, I've seen many of the concerns here, such as heat, and they say that on the hottest day in July, they are able to walk on their artificial turf and it feels just fine. And so I am looking at some of these things that are from 2012. I believe maybe the next slide, Slide 8, the lead content concern was taken off because it said something like that it had been changed, the formula had been changed. So I'm curious if we're looking at all of these concerns that are from 2012, that some of them might have changed because the technology and the turf changed, or if these are, if there's any other updates that we should be reviewing before we make any final decisions.
Well, I can tell you that it was 2019 when EPA identified that there were toxic chemicals that were leaching, including phthalates. I'm not quite sure where the information is coming from as far as artificial turf being cool to walk on or cooler than natural lawns. All of the research that I have looked at and have been following up on is saying just the opposite of that. I would like to point out that there is no requirement, to my knowledge, in our landscape code that says you have to have a lawn at all. So you could have ground cover, have larger landscape beds like I was talking about, and I really want to bring up again that there is no life in this area where artificial turf is. You strip away the soil, releasing carbon into the atmosphere, you compact sand, you then put barriers on top of that, including plastics. There's nothing that's growing on the top of it. We have pollinators and other birds and other animals that are dependent on those pollinators. So, you know, there's a perceived convenience factor, I think, but from an environmental standpoint, I don't see that there have been any significant changes in, say, a 2012 review and what we're seeing now. The chemicals are there, the runoff is still increased, it's still from fossil fuels, and there is no habitat. The quality, maybe the quality of what it looks like has changed, but those factors have not changed.
We'll circle back around. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I know that one of the topics of concern is water usage for maintaining if people choose to have a grass lawn. What is our access to reclaimed water in the city for residents to be able to use that for watering their lawns versus, you know, drinkable water, which is what we're using on our lawns?
I'm probably not the best person to address this, but we do not have the infrastructure, so to have reclaimed water, you have to have those pipes laid throughout the municipality to have access to that, and we don't have that. Now, whether we can or are working more toward that, I can't really address it, but that's why it's not available now. We do, within the Sustainability Office, have rain barrels that we give away to residents, which you can get one rain barrel from us. Cisterns are certainly available so that you could collect water.
I have a rain barrel, and I love it. I actually hook up a hose to it, and we water a lot with our rain barrels. So, you know, I can't express to you how much in support of the work that you do I am. To that point, does the Sustainability Department, and you mentioned an advisory committee, does that committee have a commission liaison?
Yes, it's Commissioner Shof.
Okay, very good, thank you. I wasn't sure, I have not attended one of those meetings in the past, so I might like to look at one. I'm curious if that committee has ever prioritized the actions and policies that the city could be taking based on the impacts to our environment? Because I know that sometimes we take on policies or issues that help public perception of sustainability, and then we take on policies and issues because it is the number one or number two biggest impact to our environment. And I don't know if we have a listing of that, that we're working towards, I'd love to see it if we have that.
We did just update our Sustainability Action Plan and included like all of our commitments, the Southeast Florida Regional Climate Compact, Regional Climate Action Plan. We are including the Lead for Cities Best Practices, since we are going for another recertification with them. All of those have been reviewed by the Sustainability Advisory Committee, and I will tell you that the discussion with artificial turf on the last go-round was with very mixed support, that because of all of the negatives that I've, you know, raised today, it is something that I certainly can bring up again with another, with this committee, if it's your wish. But we do, through that committee, look at different policies and actions, and then they have the opportunity to recommend to the mayor. That is how that committee is set up.
You know, it's interesting that somebody's backyard could be exponentially larger than their front yard, but that we've allowed that. It almost seems like, you know, maybe the policy could stay a certain percentage of the yard if we're trying to minimize the amount or the use of it, you know, I just, I am still struggling with that piece. I hear you, Assistant Administrator Fauna, that, you know, it was the smaller amount that were reported by code, using it in their driveway, but, you know, that was an area of concern that I heard as well, and I would argue that, you know, them either, I don't know that they'll be able to grow grass in those decorative areas or not, or so replacing it with concrete will be the solution.
One thing I did want to point out and remind us of, and I think, Rick, it was on your Slide 17, about the extensive outreach. When we were looking at this ordinance in 2018, the various groups that were part of workshops in 2017 to advise the commissioners on the direction, looks like there were local landscape architects, community participants, and you can see the names there. So again, there was an extensive effort to speak to stakeholders, including community members, in 2017 before we made the amendments in 2018. Commissioner Shof?
Thank you, Mayor, and certainly appreciate the additional information. I think as I look at this issue, kind of some of the problem occurred during our 2018 compromise year because it has started a little bit of that slippery slope. I understand if you can install pavers, then why would you not be able to install another impervious material? And so that's where we reached that compromise. And further, I understand the frustration of residents. Where I struggle is, we have residents that have code violations on a number of subjects. I have a resident within my own district that purchased a house with an illegally enclosed porch and now has to take that illegal enclosure down. So to that point, where do we stop the enforcement for not knowing? I understand it's a frustrating situation, but that's kind of the struggle of where I come from. Looking at going forward, I do think it's important for us to constantly address the changes that are happening. So looking at science of potential improvements, we're not the only municipality looking at this issue, and so I guess I would just be curious to know how other municipalities that, not on the unregulated side, but looking at the regulated side, if they're upkeep with this issue, and, you know, knowing if there are more sustainable ways to implement a process. So, you know, I think those are the things that I find difficult, namely on code enforcement. You know, I appreciate Mr. Posner coming up, and, you know, code enforcement is code enforcement. They are taking the rules that are in place and they are enforcing them, and certainly within the North End, I appreciate that very much. I have a resident of Coleman Park who some of you may remember coming in under Mayor Memorial's administration with this very same issue. So this has been an ongoing issue, and he, you know, had the same thing, where he had to remove the turf from his front yard. But, you know, this ordinance is enforced across the board for all of our residents, and so, you know, I think that there could be adjustments made into the future, looking at things like driveways, et cetera. But looking at what science is today, I think it's that 2008 portion that probably does it with trying to get the logic of pavers versus turf and leads us here today, along with the frustration of not knowing. So, you know, I guess it kind of leaves us in a place of looking forward to what are the changes that we can do and how can we constantly update on this subject? Because again, I guess I would argue turf 15 years ago is not turf today. So is there a place where we can get some more information to the answer to that question of what are the differences and what have the improvements been, what have been improvements that have been made over the years, et cetera? I guess that's information I would like to know for another day. I certainly support enforcing the codes that we have on the books, again, to the points that I made earlier. So, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. Just to touch upon what Commissioner Shov said, I think it was maybe Slide number 23 talked about the different municipalities that had the same issues, and, you know, I have heard from several residents, there's been a lot of research into all of our neighboring municipalities that may be allowing turf, and Boynton Beach specifically is actually discouraging people from using lawn, real grass on larger projects because of the water conservation issues. So I would also support looking forward to something that we could look at that would be more flexible in our code. I understand and appreciate that we are enforcing the codes that we have now, but that doesn't mean that that is the correct code going into the future. I am by no means an expert in the subject of artificial turf, I've been trying to research it as much as I can, but it does seem that it is being used in many different ways than it was in 2012, and a lot of it does go to being more environmentally friendly in ways that it may not have been in 2012, and also because of other environmental issues and allergies and things like that. So I would certainly be open to looking into being more flexible in a code moving forward, and I'm only one vote on this commission, but that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
When you say more flexibility, are you going to offer data to support that?
Well, I would be happy to do a lot more research to offer data, but I mean, from everything that I have read, I'm not completely convinced that it is more, that it is more environmentally friendly to have grass, what I've heard from some of the runoff, especially in neighborhoods that are, let's say, near Flagler, and the runoff from the grass that is from pesticides and others is, could be potentially more damaging than anything that is from the artificial turf. So I, you know, would be happy to come back with more research on that, or to try to find experts to, you know, bring in more data, but...
I mean, that's an opinion, because I could take the other side of that and say that installing product on your yard that's made from fossil fuels is more damaging than any runoff. Also, there is runoff, and I think one of the slides showed, when you, using artificial turf encourages runoff, because you don't have anything underneath it to capture. So, I mean, those are opinions, and we can have that conversation all day long. I'm just saying when you're talking about having more flexibility, I think you need to have some definitions, and the business case has to be made for amending the ordinance, and hopefully that, if there is a desire to amend it, it will be based upon specific data, and we've tried to show the data that was supporting the implementation of the ordinance initially. So if we're going to change it, let's make it based upon data and not just anecdotal So if we're going to change it, let's make it based upon data and not just anecdotal evidence. And I don't know what Boynton Beach is considering. Looks like they're considering restrictions. I don't know, I mean, can you say definitively that Boynton Beach is going to make it more favorable for artificial turf? Do you know that for a fact? That's what you hear? Okay, well, you know, I would like to have some more specific data underlying that. All I'm saying is that if we're going to make changes to our ordinance, it's not just this one, it's any of them, I would hope that we would do it based upon specific data and not anecdotal evidence. Mr. Fauna?
Yeah, Mayor Commissioner, I also want to point out Town of Palm Beach is going the opposite direction and making it more restrictive. So, but on the point of flexibility, again, I think it's important to reiterate, there is flexi, there is natural flexibility. There is, there are a number of ground coverings that are currently allowed under code. When I was Director of Housing Community Development, we did a historic preservation project in Coleman Park where almost the entire front lawn, front yard is, there's no, there's no grass covering. It's all natural, I mean, it's all Florida-friendly habitat and very easy to maintain, very little water necessary. So the code currently does include flexibility, natural flexibility.
Commissioner Warren? I'm sorry, did you want to speak to that point?
I did also want to say that if you look at the property as a whole, we already are including that flexibility in the side and the backyard. So it is only right now the front yard that we are talking about having that landscape requirement that is living, growing things. So look, I would just encourage you to look at the property as a whole and say that we already do have flexibility there.
Commissioner Warren?
I am pro-earth and natural surfaces and the things that are, that nature has already provided. I lean that way. But I also feel that I'm not well-informed about different options as it relates to artificial turf. I don't feel that I've received enough information about the progress of what has happened when these, when this ordinance was originally implemented versus where we are today. And I would like to know if there's an opportunity for us to receive more information from, that is not simply from the staff perspective, but from an additional expert information about artificial turf and different types of artificial turf so that we could look at, perhaps reviewing this and implementing some parameter changes based off of real information.
I mean, you as commissioners, you are certainly entitled to get information from whatever sources you can. You have staff members, I guess, that can help you with that research. I don't know, if you're asking our staff to do that research for you, I'm not going to authorize them to do that. We have an ordinance in place. We presented to you the information that supports that ordinance. My position, staff's position, is that that ordinance should remain in place. If you want to make the business case for why we should change the ordinance, produce the information. But we're not going to do that research for you. Our position, the staff position, is that the ordinance should remain in place, as is. If you have information, experts, that you want to come and speak, you know, we will accept that. But I'm not going to put the burden on staff to go out and try to make the case against the ordinance. That's nonsensical. We have an ordinance in place. Now, if you want to do that research and present that information in a public forum, then that's fine.
Commissioner Lambert, you were going to, you had your hand, did we, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Penny, is, can you talk about the idea that we didn't want it in the, why not the front yard again? I mean, I understand that we're trying to limit the amount, but if we were trying to limit the amount, why wouldn't we say a certain percentage of your overall available space for landscaping or hardscaping? Why did we say no to the front yard?
I think you probably need to, would that be Rick? She's dealing with things on sustainability, so...
Again, Commissioner, it boils down to several things, but first and foremost, there's just visibility. So eliminating from the front, you can't see it. That's the reason we allowed it in the back.
And if you can't see it, then other people won't do it or won't, what does the can't see it have to do with it?
The front, again, the front yard is where you have to have the requirement that 75% of the yard has to be landscaped or minimum 1,000 square feet. As was said earlier, it doesn't have to be grass, it could be another material that's Florida-friendly. Again, because in the back, again, that could all be hardscaped, we, that's why the exception was made back in 2018, and that was really more of a compromise that the commission and the Sustainability Action Committee decided. But even in the backyard, there was also the additional requirement that it had to be screened and not visible from the street. So when I showed that graphic that shows that, yes, you can put it in the back, but again, you couldn't, you couldn't be able to see it, but that was, I'll find the slide, but that was the intent.
Any other questions, comments on this topic?
Mayor, can I speak to that briefly?
Yes.
That last point? One other point on that is the city can enforce that there is some living landscape in the front. The city would not be able to enforce that if we just did an overall percentage and somebody said, oh, building landscape's in the rear. We can't get back there to enforce that at all. Unless there is a way from the right of way, way we can legally be to see it, and in the case of artificial grass, sometimes touch it, there would be no way to enforce that. So if we did an overall percentage, you could wind up branching off where people can pave the entire front and say, I have grass in back. Just no way to enforce it.
Again, another point I want to make, we've heard a lot of comment in city commission meetings and others about the high water bills and amount of water that's necessary. And I just reiterate the point that was made, I think, by Ms. Redford about alternatives. And we have alternatives in our landscaping code that if someone feels that a turf lawn, I think it's the technological term, is too expensive to maintain, there are alternatives to using other types of landscaping available that are acceptable under our landscaping code. So I think, and again, if you look back at the outreach and the discussions and conversations that was back in 2017, I think there's been a lot of discussion, attempt to try to be as flexible as possible and provide our residents with as many options as possible while balancing that against some of the sustainability concerns and et cetera. So I think the code works. Okay, anything else? Okay?
I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Mayor, I had another comment.
Yes.
Thank you. It sounds like there's not the will right now for an overhaul of this, although it sounds like there may be some desire for some small changes at some future time. I wanted to talk about my third point in my opening statement, which was about the communication. And I agree with Commissioner Shof, we need to be fair and even with our enforcement of code enforcement laws and regulations. I'm curious if we have ever come to this situation in the past and how we dealt with it, where 40-plus citations of the exact same type were handed over to us, and if it was our procedure and policy to just go and cite them, or if there was any type of communication given beforehand? And I certainly understand your statement, Mayor, that being ignorant of the law does not disregard the law or not being aware of the law. But clearly, if there were that many citations, that many that had this infraction, and I've heard a number of upwards of 70-plus that people have documented, there's clearly some misunderstanding of what that policy is. I'm curious how we've addressed that in the past or if this is the first time we've come across this type of situation.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily agree with that proposition. Clearly, there's some misunderstanding. I don't accept that. I think people may have tried to get away with it, but I don't think anyone misunderstood it. And again, the presumption of the knowledge is not that we told you, the presumption of knowledge, you hire experts and they know our ordinances, and I would imagine any company that installed artificial turf on anyone's property is well-aware of the landscape ordinance in our city. And if they aren't, that's the first person you should look at. Why would you put this on my lawn when you knew it wasn't permissible? But leave that between you and the contractor. So I don't think there's a misunderstanding. I think there may have been an effort to either ignore, because maybe your neighbor got away with it, and so you think you could. But to me, that's not justification for, once you do get caught, that's not a justification to say, well, my neighbor didn't get caught, so therefore you should, no. The law's the law, and the ordinance is the ordinance. It's been on the books. But anyway, I will let Mr. Green address your more specific...
Mayor, I agree with what you said. I was simply going to add that there has been a lot of flexibility built in with the special magistrate. I know when code enforcement brought a lot of these cases forward, we indicated that there was going to be a future workshop, and in many cases, I don't want to speak for Mitch, but I know in many cases, the special magistrate extended the time period to come into compliance to see what, if any, direction or change was going to come out of the discussions. So I think that was built in into a lot of the special magistrate's rulings.
And I think we also have to consider the precedential effect. If we start doing it in this situation, the next time 20, 30, 40 people get caught reaching another part of our ordinance, they're going to look back to 2021, August 2021, when we did whatever we did. And so as policymakers, we have to be aware of the precedent that we're setting when we attempt to intervene or upset a process that has been in place. And I would suggest that we should consider the precedent, even if you're talking about changing an ordinance, because you have 20, 30, 40 people who show up at city commission meetings urging you to do that, because that now sets a blueprint, a roadmap for how do you get an ordinance change you don't like? You get 20, 30, 40 of your neighbors who show up and start sending in emails and show up at city commission meetings, and boom, now you get the ordinance change. That's not the way we should conduct businesses as a city.
But you do, for God's sake. You don't want the people to have to say...
There is, there is no public comment at these work sessions.
But just us, one side wants to say...
All right, anyway, anything else? Commissioner Shof?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to move forward, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Green, maybe the situation varies per resident, but I think our residents were looking for some path forward. So the only way to clear this code violation is to remove and replace. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
If I can respond to that as well. In the case of it being in the front, that is absolutely correct. But if it's in the side setback, they have the option of applying for a permit, and if what they already did can be approved with that permit, then that also would comply a case.
Anything else? Okay, I don't have anything. Under Mayor's Matters, Commissioners, you have anything for the good of the order? All right, hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.